Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a Thursday night edition of the Town of Foxborough School Committee Regular Meeting. This is a meeting that was scheduled for a few days ago, but we were snowed out. And so we are conducting it tonight, Thursday, February 5th, I think. Not February 2nd, right?
Right.
We have an agenda tonight that's a little bit abbreviated, and I'm gonna do my best to move us right through because I know it's cold and getting colder outside, and the roads will get just a little colder, so we'll just move through it as quickly as we can. But as usual, we'll start with any visitors who want to be heard. We have some minutes to approve from our last meeting. We have an exciting teaching and learning highlight tonight, a review of the new Foxborough High School Engineering Course with Mr. Nash and some of his students, which we're really excited to hear about. We're then gonna hear an equally exciting mid-year technology progress report. The community may remember, we have a new technology director, and we're gonna hear from Mr. Hire and some of the things he's been working on, which we're excited about. We'll then take a look at the 2015 District Report Card, an FY15 Budget Update, Acceptance of a Donation, and Conclude with Other Matters. Just before we get to visitors, I just want to thank the superintendent for her work over the last several days, communicating once again on behalf of the town, and making, I think, some nice judgments about school closures and school openings. And I actually had a parent out of the blue today. Commend Mrs. Spinelli for her judgment, and I know these things are never easy. And we are in a bit of an unprecedented week here, as we sit and discuss. And I couldn't help but reflect on our conversation last meeting about the calendar, and our choice and our decision to start a little earlier than we perhaps could, but then when you see all these days of cancellation piling up, maybe we were wise to do that. So I know the majority of the committee was in support of that earlier version that we adopted. I also just wanted to make one comment about the calendar, just if I may, just while we're on this little monologue of mine. But one of the things that I think should be spelled out or pointed out again for the community is the nice design that we have a long weekend still around the Labor Day holiday.
Yes.
And I don't know that we emphasized that last meeting when we spoke. I know we talked about it at some point. But just for the public to understand, we will start on September 1st, which is a Tuesday, but we will have that Friday, the 4th, off.
Yes.
And then Monday, the 7th, off. So for those who do have Labor Day plans, I think it was a nice design that we built in an extra day off. Am I articulating that right?
Yes, there will still be a four-day Labor Day weekend.
Thank you. Four-day Labor, that's well said. And in addition, just again for reminders, the last day, if we were to have no cancellation days, would be Thursday, June 16th.
Yes.
With the possibility of the 23rd being the last day if we had to use all five cancellation days.
Correct.
So just a few reminders, and again, I think the Mother Nature has sent us a message about our calendar planning here. It's kind of timely with all the snow we've gotten, so I know personally I feel comfortable with the decision made last meeting. And thank you again for your continued judgment.
Can't wait for next week's storm.
Oh, I know.
More opportunities.
I was thinking the same thing with about the number of days that we've taken off and about the calendar.
Well, it's been four since you made that vote. We've been obligated to keep school closed four days.
Yeah, I don't ever remember two consecutive weeks with two consecutive days off, but it was record-setting that in a seven-day period, more snow fell in the seven-day period in Boston than ever in history. But I mean, that could happen again because this is, I'm really up on the weather, just want you to know what you're worried about, weather science, but it is actually caused by global warming, the weather experts were telling me. So this could continue, we don't really know, but it certainly has been a disjointed few weeks of school. Hopefully next week, we're in every day. Don't know.
So again, first day of school next year, Tuesday, September 1st, a four-day weekend, including Friday, the 4th, and Monday, the 7th of September. Last day of school, Thursday, June 16th, barring any cancellation days. And Mrs. Lord, nice to see you back. We missed you last meeting.
Thank you. Oh, I was there. Mrs. Spinelli had it correct. She saw my two hands up with that nice global new addition we're adding.
Right.
She could tell.
Okay. So with that said, any visitors who want to be recognized tonight before we begin? If not, we'll go to approval of minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes from January 26th.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 26th.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor? 4-0, thank you. And our teaching and learning highlight tonight.
I am thrilled to have Mr. Pat Nash here and four of our engineering students, if you want to drag up close to the microphone while you get ready. So I know Mr. Nash will introduce the students, but I certainly don't mind. We have Kurt Dudek, Erica Snow, Cam Seeley, and Samantha Keery. And as you may know, as you do know, this is our first year of having an engineering course, and it was something that was really important to all of us. So I'm gonna turn it right over to Mr. Nash. Very exciting, couldn't be happier, and thank you for stepping forward as the teacher for the course. So I'll turn it right over to you, Ms. Nash.
All right, sounds good. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to go ahead and be able to go ahead and do this with these students. So far, and as you guys know, you guys sent me out to Texas. I had a blast out there. I mean, they worked me to death, but, so I did everything that they're doing now in two weeks in a full year. So I actually got to do hands-on experience of what I'm teaching, which you rarely get in a course. So it's very rich, and the experience has been great, and I've learned a lot. And luckily, I've been able to pass that on to the students as well, and I feel like they're getting a great education from that. Talking to one of my students today, actually, so an international student that we just got from Foxborough, he had the opportunity to tell me that there's nothing like this in any other high school around here. He has a lot of friends around here now, and he said it overseas. He goes, "There's nothing like this program." He goes, "It's phenomenal." And most of these students that we're seeing are getting into engineering, actually, most of the ones tonight as well, are looking to get into engineering. So to be able to offer that when we didn't offer it before has been a huge opportunity for them. So basically, to go through, you know, as you guys see in your packets, it's basically a year-long course where we are given student-based projects. So very rarely am I up at the board speaking. Usually, it's mostly around them designing their projects or, you know, brainstorming things of that nature. So we have what are called projects for us. So those last about six weeks, and then we have explorations, which is about one to two weeks between that, to give a little bit of breakup. But we get to go over, we've been over mechanical, right now, we're in civil, so we get to go through all different engineering fields, which I think has been a huge opportunity. It's very rigorous, and, you know, they're constantly busy and constantly within a project. But I think the big thing is to take away from this is they're in a lot of different teams, which you don't necessarily get in the classroom all the time where you're in all different teams working together, which now, I think, a lot, you know, with the technology going on in the world today, a lot of teams are being involved, and it is a great experience for these students to be able to go ahead and involve that, you know, and kind of take the different roles that teams can have. Also, we're working on documentation. So this is basically designed like a college course for the first year, is the way that it was explained to me, which I think is huge for them, for these students that are going on to college for engineering, are able to step right in and know exactly what's going on. So documentation is very important right now, and the engineering process is what we're really working on, and seeing that civil engineering and engineering in general, you know, is really to go ahead and actually make a difference in the lives of, you know, the people, which I think is a huge opportunity for these students to take. But I'll stop talking. I know you guys are interested to talk to them and hear about the project so far, so I'll hand it over to these guys. So Cam and Sam, you know, they're gonna talk to you about the pinhole camera, and then Kurt and Erica will talk to you about the civil engineering projects we did.
So one of our first projects that we did was to create a pinhole camera, and at first I was pretty skeptical as to how this, how like something like this would make a picture as like a camera. But we talked about how like they're used and different, like, people who used them like in actual art and then saw how it actually worked in real life. So it was kind of cool to learn about that. And then we jumped right into the project where we had to build our own pinhole camera. So basically, it's just a light-type box, which means that like no light can get in. So when we started the project, I went to Home Depot and just tried to find something that would work. And a lot of people were talking about cardboard and like shoeboxes and stuff like that, but like cardboard isn't really light tight. And when we did our like preliminary tests, we'd put like a blank piece of photo paper inside, and then we'd bring it outside in the sun and just hold it around for a few minutes, and then bring it back inside and develop it in the dark room that we created in one of the empty rooms or spare rooms for the math department. And if it was black or like a dark gray, we knew that it wasn't light tight, and if it was mostly white, then it was. So in my search in Home Depot, I saw this, and I thought, this would be perfect. So I, we, Sam and I came up with the idea for the paint can project, and a lot of people followed suit with us because when we tried it the first time, it was completely white inside, so it worked really well for us.
So it was a very lengthy process to go through to make the pictures. We had to go through a lot of design ideas and think about what would be the best way to set this up. So we had to develop, figure out the exposure time needed for the camera to be outside. And so once we finally were able to go test the camera, we, it was kind of tiring after time because you'd go through and the picture wouldn't come out, but you would just go through again and again, and finally, you'd be able to develop some pictures that actually came out really nice for us, which was good.
Could you guys talk about who your customer was for the design?
Yeah, so we had to design, this had to be designed for someone with disabilities, just like, what was it? Dexterity.
Limited, yes.
Limited dexterity. So to simulate this, we had oven gloves that we used to be able to open and close the paint can, which worked very well as well, so it was a good idea.
Yeah, we got a tool that, like a basically, just a basic paint can opener, and so like when I got the can, I originally hadn't even thought about the dexterity issue, but I got home and tossed on some oven mitts and used the tool, and it worked right away, so luckily that happened. But, so yeah, the customer wanted it to be easy to build and able to be used by someone with limited dexterity in their hands, so paint can, it was pretty easy to build because all you had to do was get one. And then, that was about it. All you had to do was poke a hole in the bottom, and it was done, so it was pretty easy for the customer. And it was pretty easy to open and move around inside, so.
Ms. Nash, can I ask a question about that unit for a minute? Do you mind? I know you're gonna go on.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So I visited one of your classes when you guys had just developed the pinhole cameras, and you were going in and out, and I was really pleasantly surprised by one thing that I noticed, which is you students had a lot of choice in what materials, how you wanted to build it. There was so much variety of, like you did the paint can, but there was so much variety, there was a lot of duct tape involved, and people who chose the cardboard, I noticed, trying to get the light to, but I thought that was such a great thing, that you weren't told what materials to use. You just had to decide what would work better. I thought that level of choice was such a great challenge, and I thought the creative, the ways that each group had decided on how to get the limited dexterity barrier, how to get past that, were so different. But I think the construction of the actual pinhole camera had more variety than how people were doing the dexterity issue. I thought it was really fascinating, and I was happy to see that. So that was a little challenge, I think. There were things that looked like jewelry boxes, there were things that looked like strong boxes, there were just, there were a lot of paint cans, but that was interesting. It was great.
So we have some examples of some pictures that have came out that were.
Yeah. Kurt's actually worked really, really well. He actually got the best picture of the porta potty.
That was my next question. Did you ever get one better than the porta potty?
It came out really detailed, so that was Kurt's, that he came up with. If you guys want to put it through. Were what the students actually created out of these, you know, structures that they had built. And, you know, to comment on the different materials, there are some designs, this is what's great about this course, is in this case, they were able to use whatever materials they really wanted. And the one we're currently using, they're limited, which can happen out in the real world, so sometimes they're constrained by materials, or they're constrained financially as well. So it kind of gives you a little bit of everything throughout the course, which I think is definitely a great point to make. You guys wanna talk about civil engineering?
All right, so our current unit is now civil engineering moving on, and our task we had to create was, there's a region in India where earthquakes are very prominent, and our task was to design a building that was restrained with height and cost and all that. And we had to make it so it could withstand an earthquake of an average size of 2 Hz or 2 rotations per second. And we had designed for the basic building, it gave us the height, 72 centimeters, which is scaled down, and the floors had to be 12 fours. And then from there, once we had the base building, we did tests to see how much it swayed using the accelerometers on the shaker tables, see how much the base building would move. And then there, we compiled our class results to see the average of how much the earthquake affected the building. And then from there on out, we did a small Project One class where we looked around to find different methods used throughout the world of helping reduce the effect of an earthquake on a building. And then we presented to the class, we all wrote down the different ideas, and then we compiled as a class what we thought would be the best methods to help strengthen the buildings or reduce the effect of the earthquake. And then we broke back off into our groups, and we all tried out a method. We selected methods, and two groups each did the same method for consistency to see if the results were consistent throughout, make sure we didn't make a silly error. And then that was our second building we built, and then we got group results again of which methods were the best. And what we are now is the third build, which we were unrestrained, and we had to build what we thought would be the best method to reduce an earthquake. And we're still building now, but there's lots of different types, such as bracing or a pendulum through the center of the building. And a lot of groups chose all the different methods, so it'll be interesting to see how they work. And the restraints were, like I said, the height. We only had three sizes of beams, small, medium, and large, and we also had a cost restraint of $700,000.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest issues that we came across with the third build is the cost constraint. We had to get a design approved by Mr. Nash before we started building, that we had worked out all the details, so we knew exactly how much this building would cost, and we knew that it would be within the $700,000. And only then could we start building. So it's definitely difficult because you have to, you have to consider the height, like with the different sized beams, you know, they cost different amounts, but that cost adds up as you build the building higher. So, you know, maybe you want a shorter building but with sturdier beams, or a taller building with less sturdy beams. Also, with the pendulum, the mass damper, we would put washers on to kind of slow the swaying of the building down, and each washer costs like $15,000, so those were really expensive, but they worked extremely well. So it's also figuring out how effective you want the building to be, and how cost-effective do you want it to be. So we're still working out details, but Sam's in my group chose mass damper, and there's a lot of variables that we get to play around, which is fun for us, so.
And then to add to that, a couple others, since they were gonna come here, but they were unable to come tonight since it got moved, was they created rollers, which I thought was really neat. So the shaker tables, I don't know if you guys have seen a shaker table before, but the shaker tables basically move these back and forth really, really rapidly, and actually, you know, most of the kids were really excited on that first day, which I could have captured all their faces, which I did on video, maybe we can get that later, but they were like, "When is it gonna break? When is it gonna break?" And when it didn't break, they're like, you know, "Oh, my gosh." But I was like, "Would you want to live in that building?" And everybody said, "No, of course." So that was an awesome piece, but some of the students actually created rollers, so like the research they talked about, like real-life stuff, so they created rollers out of glue sticks, so it rolled back and forth, so while the table was shaking, the actual building would stay pretty much non-shaking, is rolling back and forth. And now, actually, that same group is now trying to generate a base where it actually, the building levitates off of the shaker table building, so as it shakes, the building actually is levitated, so that's being used in China. So they, I didn't even know that existed, which is huge for them to go out and find that research, and then they bring it back, and then they want to try it. So I think that's huge. One thing that I've really seen on this one is a lot of students like love this build, and they really want to have this in their building, but they realize, going back to the real-life constraints, that I really, really want this, but it's not about me, it's about my customer, and I think that's a huge thing for them to be able to realize, you know, out in the real world, we don't necessarily get to do what we want, but we need to make sure that we propose the best plan. So they're also gonna do a technical report, which engineers do a lot of, so they're getting that experience in the technical report side in the civil engineering as well. So, do you guys just want to comment on the class overall, and then we can ask the females how their experiences have been? So just so you guys know the class breakdown, we have six females currently out of 48 students. So that's one thing, we're working with the University of Texas. He was very, very supportive throughout this program. Actually, I mean, I'm able to work with 127 different teachers throughout the United States in this program as well, so I video conference a lot with them, as well as, you know, the University of Texas engineers and also their teachers there. So, you know, their big push right now is to get more females. Working with Schneider Electric, we've developed a great relationship this year.
That's excellent.
So we're also trying to help out the female population, as well as the male population, but trying to even, trying to balance out a little, because it's just as important, because we've kind of figured out, you know, each of our brains, you know, work a little bit differently. So I gotta tell you, their notebook's a lot better than a lot of the males, as right now, so we're trying to learn from each other, right? All right, so what do you guys think of the course so far, and, you know, would you recommend that?
Oh, I didn't really know what to expect coming into it, because I want to go into engineering, but I never really thought about what it would be like as a class. So like, starting out, when we had that pinhole camera, it was kind of like getting thrown into like a pit and like not knowing what to do, and just having to like work through your own problems, which I think is a great experience for like someone who doesn't know what they want to do, and like you get to like real-world like training, basically, as to what you're gonna be doing. And we went on a field trip to the Schneider Electric in Foxborough, and it was really cool just to see like what it is like in the real world outside of the high school and stuff like that. But overall, the classes, I think is really great for someone who's engineering-based or who wants to pursue a career in engineering.
I've really enjoyed the course, because for the past, I've always had the thought of being an engineer in my mind, but I haven't really had any experience with it. So having this course was really nice because it goes through the different types of engineers, so I've got to like see which ones I'd like. And it's different because it's very hands-on, so it's a really fun class to be able to go to and something different each day. So it's just, you've learned a lot to work with others, to compromise, because a lot of times, you won't have the same ideas as someone, but you have to work together and merge your ideas, which is a good skill to learn.
That's exactly what real life and real work entails. It's a great point.
Yeah, I would agree. I've really enjoyed the course so far. There've definitely been a little hiccups here and there. Like when we were testing the first build for the civil engineering, we, some of the accelerometers didn't work, and that put us back a few days because we never knew which ones were gonna work. The only way to find out was to test it. So, you know, 20, 30 minutes into testing something, we realized it doesn't work, and we can't get that time back. Hopefully, now that we, we've worked through those things, next year, though, they won't be a problem. But through it all, it's been really enjoyable, working with different people, each build has been really nice. Definitely a challenge at times because sometimes people don't really have the same mindset as you going into things, or the same work ethic, which has been a problem. But at the same time, it's hands-on experience, it's world experience, it's gonna happen. So I think it's been great, great training before we go into college and really start getting into some serious engineering, so.
Like you said, what I found about the class is, when you go to start a project, you can't just, you know, build. First, you have to find out what your restraints are, what materials you have, and it's all more planning that goes into it before you just start building whatever your project is. I think that's good to realize for a lot of students, because engineering is also about, I guess, there's some writing and planning, a lot of group work, which is good, because in other classes and Foxborough High School, you don't really get exposed to the group work as much, but here in all the projects we do, you're with a new set of group members every project, and you always have to work through absent group members, and they don't tell you when they're gonna be absent, if they have certain data on their computer, or the stuff like that, the mindset. But it's really good to learn how to compromise with people, take some of their ideas, and, you know, maybe sacrifice some of yours, and really just, I don't know, learn how to effectively work with group members without offending the whole class or anything like that.
Wow, what a valuable experience. That's such a good point.
And working with Mr. Nash is probably okay too, right?
Yeah, Mr. Nash is great. He helps us a lot with our building and stuff.
Yeah, he's very enthusiastic.
So if people are watching at home and you don't have the handout, so they've already had a first unit, which is an overview of teamwork and norms and help you work together. Exploration, designing for customers, which was such a good point, I didn't realize was part of this, is that it doesn't always matter what you want, it's what you're supposed to deliver. That's great. So that was your first unit, well, second unit. The third was a team challenge, discovering design, which is multidisciplinary, the first two. And then, you know, for exploration, understanding data, which is chemical engineering. You're just now finishing Unit 5, which is designing with data, civil engineering. And then to be experienced is Unit 6, a team challenge in reverse engineering, which is mechanical, and another one in programming, electrical and software, one in systems engineering, which is multidisciplinary, and one in control systems, which is electrical and software engineering. So this is exactly what we hope for, that you would get to experience the different disciplines within engineering, because to one of your points was, you're not sure what type, you might know you want to do something with engineering and problem solving, but you don't know exactly what that means until you get to college. So I think this is really such a great idea to have you experience the different facets of it, to see what you like. So couldn't be happier.
Tina?
I know Mr. Nash said there were 48 students, but that's two sections of this here, don't one.
Yes, yes, two classes of 24, yeah.
And is it all seniors?
Um, so it's seniors and juniors. Yeah, what I really, to talk a little bit more about the makeup of the class, is it's actually, it's actually excellent, because, you know, some students are, you know, have more honors classes or AP classes, as well as, you know, some students have CP classes as well, so it's a great mix, because what one student might accelerate at, or, you know, excel at on one project, you know, he doesn't excel as well on the next project, he needs help from somebody to get that. So, you know, just because you're good at one project, as these guys can kind of tell you, doesn't mean you're gonna be really strong in the next, and you might have to take a different role in the group, which is a huge experience to be able to, you know, say, "Hey, you know, this is your strong point, you know, you're gonna take the lead on this one, you know, I might need some more information from you." So I think really coming up in this second semester, we're gonna see a lot more of that with the programming, you know, the robotics and things like that. Some people really have a background in that, in that class, and then some students don't. I think that's where you're really gonna see, wow, we need some specialists in this to help the other groups out. But it's nice that, you know, all the different students that I have in, throughout the levels, you know, they can excel in this course, you know, at some point or another, or they're learning from somebody else. So it's nice to have that whole group, rather than, you know, the honors students going through all the honors students. I think it's great for them to be able to interact with one another, too, because they all have great ideas, I mean, great ideas that they come up with that. You know, I wish I was as creative as a lot of these kids, to tell you the truth. So I'm learning just as much from them as they are from me, if not more from, from me, from my perspective, I feel like, from these guys, which is huge. So yeah, so definitely, it's two classes of 24, so originally, we're hoping for, I think, one class, you know, we're gonna get pumped up about that. So once, you know, we got the phone call for two, we're like, "Hey, you know, this is, this is awesome." So, and then, uh.
That's great.
Yeah, and the University of Texas is really pumped about, is about what we're doing here, too. So I'm constantly on conference calls with them, at least once a month, and then they send me emails as well. You know, and they just send out messages that they're praying for us for the snowstorms, too. So it's very interactive, but they love Tom Brady, that's all they called me down there.
Oh, beautiful.
It was a great week for us.
Tom Brady.
So, yeah.
That's great.
So, no, it's awesome interaction, you know, any questions that we figure out, and I think, talking to it, we definitely have some hiccups as the first year, you know, some makes and companies, you know, which ones we need to work with, and which ones are, you know, we're gonna go to next year. Uh, you know, some, some, um, makes and companies, you know, which, which ones we need to work with, and which ones are, you know, we're gonna go to next year. I think that, that was huge, too, to be able to figure that out, so. The pilot of the year has been, uh, this is, it's, um, far superior to my expectations, to tell you the truth, it's been awesome.
Mine too.
Pat, I wanna thank you for taking this on, um, and bringing this new curriculum offering to Foxborough High School. And I know it took some personal time, as you mentioned, over the summer, so, thank you. I think we have one more comment, and then we'll thank the students.
I was curious, you said, Pat, that, um, out of the forty-eight students, is that right, six are female?
Yes.
Have you spoken with, uh, it sounds like you have a lot of contact with the University of Texas.
Yes.
Have you talked to them about what their makeup is in other programs across the country that have this? Is, is there, you know, is there, uh, females in the minority? And what, do they help guide or provide resources for you, or support about how to market this more to a, to the females in, in the city?
Sure, they actually, actually, one day down in Texas, um, the day was just on training to help, um, you know, get females involved and, and, and what's actually hap- happening out in the engineering world. The engineering field is dominated by, by the male population, it's not just here at the schools, um, it is dominated. So, but what they really realized is, you know, with the robotics, um, the, the females are doing really, really well out in that field, and that, that we need more, um, and to expose them, it's, it's mostly the exposure. Honestly, you know, before I taught this course, you know, I had an idea about what engineering was, but now, like, I realized I had no idea. And I think to expo- the exposure of it, and planting the seed, um, and the ideas in that, um, is really gonna help out with, with both, um, the recruiting for this class, but, but females especially. Um, so they've, they've created videos, um, which we're working with. Um, we actually have, um, female engineers we're working with at Schneider Electric that are coming to speak to us. So they've been, they've been very supportive of us, um, and, um, yeah, and then, then basically, my own task of, um, you know, creating programs to write for, um, you know, PowerPoints and stuff like that. So I've been creating myself as, as well, to get into, um, you know, for the female students as well, coming up with, um, course recommendations coming up. So, um, we're trying to hit it from three different ways, um, and, you know, we're hoping to see an increase in that, as well as, um, you know, to get, to get the word out. So hopefully, um, we'll see a balance. I think when we first started, we thought six was good, 'cause we had only about, what, we, we thought we were gonna have twelve, and we were like, oh, wow, fifty percent, we're gonna, you know, fifty percent are female, this is awesome. And then, uh, I realized that's six, when they called me that day, um, hey, we run into class, I go, alright, that's not, it's not really that good. So, uh, so we need to change that, um, so, yeah, so I think it's important.
Well, thanks for being our front runners.
I'd love to hear from the students, and whether, after, so far, is there, is there's the continued interest in perhaps pursuing engineering, uh, after high school?
Um, well, I've, I've always been interested in engineering ever since I was in eighth grade. So, um, that definitely hasn't changed for me, taking this course. If anything, it's, it's made me more excited for it.
Right.
Um, and speaking about, um, being one of six, uh, you know, I think a lot of girls might be worried that, um, about that minority problem. Um, but I, I can't speak for Sam, but I think both of us, um, feel pretty comfortable in the class, like-
Yeah, we're treated the same, like, they don't, all the boys don't treat us differently. It's, that's also, I think, that girls are just scared of, 'cause when you think of engineering, a lot is boys-dominated. And so, um, girls don't really think they have as much of an opportunity as boys, but they really do, and I think they should progress some more.
And it's, it's a really good, uh, field for us right now, because so many places are looking to get more girls. Um, so, I know, uh, for colleges, I've been sought out by a lot of colleges, um, with them knowing from PSATs and SATs what I'm interested in, so.
What year are you?
I'm a senior.
And you?
A senior.
Both of you are seniors.
I think Tina has one more comment, then why don't we move on?
Well, just my, my thought was, our, our eighth graders do robotics, and I know that we've participated in the Tri-Town STEM Expo last year. I don't know if we're doing that again this year, but-
It's not, we're gonna run annually, so they're gonna skip this year, they're-
That's too bad, because it would be a great opportunity to showcase these young people here. I know Foxborough was really well represented, but I know our eighth-grade students who went to the Tri-Town STEM Expo last year, there were fifty percent males and females, so.
Yes.
We were evenly, so there were some up-and-coming young women who hopefully will carry the torch after you guys leave, so.
That's right, you're just ahead of the curve, just, just ahead of the curve. But I, I do, one of my best friend's daughters majored in engineering, she's about, she's thirty, my son's a, could be employed anywhere she wanted, and has been. So, um, your futures, all of you, are very bright, if you go into that.
Thank you for coming tonight, you guys. It's a great presentation.
Yes.
Keep up the good work.
Terrific. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for sharing.
Okay, thank you all. Terrific.
Mid-year technology progress report.
Yes, I'd like to invite Mr. Hire up here, Aaron, and I am gonna do the smartest thing I could do right now, and turn this entire report over to our two biggest technology experts, Dr. Amy Burdoz, our Assistant Superintendent, and Aaron Hire, our Director of Technology.
Smart.
If I say so myself, right now. This is an easy one.
So, you had a lengthy report in your packet, and what we wanted to do this evening was to go through that, but really hit the highlights. So we have a few slides that are here. The first thing that we were going to focus on was the technology plan, as you know, it was developed in 2013. And that plan, with the goals and the action steps and benchmarks that correspond with that particular plan, are all related to our vision. And just to go back to focus on that for just a moment, that it really is to promote those skills that you heard, even with our students just here, the creativity, the critical thinking, the communication, the collaboration. We just saw an excellent example of that. And with technology, it's not about the device, it's about what we're doing in classrooms. So to provide those authentic learning experiences really is what it's all about. So, I think that you'll see, as we go through this plan, a lot has happened, a lot of really exciting things are going on, and will continue to be ongoing, and we feel really good about what we've accomplished since, um, the plan was put into place. So just as a reminder, we had taken our goals from the National Technology Education, uh, Technology Plan. So we're gonna look at those five goals, and then just really highlight progress to date. Not go through every one of the action steps or benchmarks that you have in your report, but just focus on some of the really big ideas that are there. So that first goal was that all learners will have engaging and empowering learning experiences, both in and out of school, and those that will prepare them to be active, creative, knowledgeable, and ethical participants in our global networked society. So, again, this plan, the intent here was to outline what our action steps were, and what we were doing that was necessary to meet those. So a lot has happened here, and, in making sure that we have these engaging learning experiences for students. Increased access to, to the web-based interactive learning platforms, and the opportunities for virtual learning, looking into those opportunities for students by having this increased access that Aaron's gonna talk a little bit about. We now have, really, the opportunity to explore this more so. The other focus that we've, what came out within our, um, technology evaluation report that we'll talk about at the end of this, really is digital citizenship. And what we're already doing, we're doing a lot of digital citizenship within the technology curriculum, but even more so, and then to update our curriculum across all content areas, where it's focusing on technology integration, and what we're doing to empower learning by using technology.
So it's been quite, quite a busy year, in terms of, um, upgrading infrastructure and improving access for students, um, assessing curriculum and assessing instructional technology supports. Um, one of the things that, that I'd say has made a, a substantial impact this year is refining our policies and our protocols around internet content filtering and access, as well as upgrading our internet access bandwidth. Um, we upgraded bandwidth from a fifty-meg shared connection, a fifty-megabyte shared connection, to a five-hundred-megabyte connection this year, allowing students to have better access to streaming media and content like high-definition video, um, and, and to enable them to use, um, their own mobile devices and open up access to our, our wireless infrastructure.
The goal, too, really focused on assessment, and how we're leveraging technology to measure what matters, using assessment data. So as an example here, in audit of our assessment systems, we looked at, what are the different technology platforms that we use? For instance, Galileo is an assessment system that we have in place, where we build the assessments there, to, students take those assessments in ELA and math online. We also have some other platforms that we've looked at. Assistments is another one, as well as some other, many other different ones. And we wanna make sure that there's not an overlap, and that we're really leveraging what we have to the fullest potential that it has. So that's taken place. Another piece is the interactive whiteboard software. Because of the interactive whiteboards that we have in place, we've really had three different pieces of software that have been running on those, because they've not been agnostic. So we're piloting different software platforms, because now we have the opportunity to where it is agnostic, meaning we can have different pieces of hardware and use the same software, which will really impact our professional development and the support that we're able to provide teachers, instead of a teacher saying, well, I have this particular software, or I have smart software. And then, really, the support piece makes it more difficult, from the technical side, as well as from the instructional, professional development piece. Our new, um, strategic plan that's in place this year really called for strategies to address the twenty-first century skills through technology. So again, the collaboration, those four Cs, and so forth. So there's a lot, as we'll talk about with Office 365, and that you've heard, that have provided those opportunities for us and for students. And then, really, to better define what the expectations for student technology proficiency is, and looking toward the international standards, the technology standards, the ISTI standards, which were formerly the NETS, the National Education Technology Standards. And then our data warehouse, Pearson and Form. How are we taking the data that we have, analyzing that, and really use that to drive the instruction in the content that's taking place in the classroom?
So we currently have, um, twenty-two teachers, uh, across the district, participating in an evaluation of interactive soft, um, interactive whiteboard software and teaching platforms. Um, as Dr. Burdoz mentioned, this, this will allow us to standardize our professional development efforts and our training, and also increase, um, hardware, uh, life cycle. So hardware and technology is, is, is changing over so quickly and so rapidly, that it's, it's very difficult to keep up. So if we standardize on software that's hardware-agnostic, it allows us to increase the hardware life cycle and be less dependent on, on hardware and hardware-specific training. As well as, is getting, uh, providing opportunities to be more student-focused in terms of our instruction. Um, having students engaged in the interactive technology, so not necessarily the, the teacher at the board, um, but getting students involved as well, um, through different interactive curriculum and different interactive software, whether it's Web two-point-oh, uh, Web two-point-oh tools, um, that are available on the internet, or built into these platforms. Um, with Pearson and Form, uh, the data warehouse trying to drive assessment data down into the hands of teachers, where instructional decisions are made, and, and trying to really refine how quickly we can get that information back in, into those, um, teachers' hands.
Can I ask you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Katie.
I, I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit more to that, 'cause I think that's really interesting, the Pearson and Form. How data, is that, um, classroom data, is it, um, course, uh, data, is it? Because data can be so vast, it can be, you know, how, how are you using it to kinda drill down to give to the teachers so that it can impact, um, a student's learning in the classroom?
And my, and my question's gonna be essentially the same.
Okay.
I just was curious, where are we in that journey? Uh, you know, can you give us an example of how we're using data to inform instruction at any level at this point? Maybe not, maybe not all the way down to the classroom teacher, but can you just give us an example where we are in that journey?
Sure, um, as far as specifics, classroom assessments, all of the assessments that take place through the Galileo online assessment, that is all funneled into and form. All of our own writing assessments that we create rubrics for, we're able, teachers go in and input that information just from even our own writing pieces. The DRA, which is our developmental reading assessment, so really assessing reading comprehension and fluency, the information from that. So it's, it's all formative assessments, that's also MCAS data that's in there, too. We're able to download all of that information, and then say, okay, let's look at a classroom. If I have my classroom of students, and look at where they fall within MCAS, and compare that at the same time with our local assessment, so we have multiple pieces of data. It's not just looking at one piece, and we can see for trends and patterns within our classroom. Is it a particular area within English Language Arts, or a particular standard even within math? We put all of our, even basic fact fluency assessments are going within this data warehouse. So another piece where it impacts not just the classroom, is through our teacher assistance teams, which are our problem-solving teams, where if we have a struggling student, they take this information, they project it within one of the TAT, Teacher Assistance Meetings, and look at where have they been? Is there a drop-off? Because we also have longitudinal data and can look back over time, so we can see, is it just this year? Is it a pattern from the year before? And then it gives us the ability to also assign interventions and track student, and monitor their progress over time. The last piece, and then I'll throw it over to Aaron, is that it's a huge piece for us with District-Determined Measures, which is a new piece of the EdVow system from the Department of Ed, where we not, we're looking at student growth. So we're able to use our own data warehouse, take all of that information, put it in a format that's meaningful to us, and then look at that over time and kind of one-stop shopping. So, we're fully implemented, to answer your question, with all of the assessment, we continue to build it. And we're looking at things now, such as in wellness, the different fitness pieces and assessments that they do. How do we wanna build that into the system, and look at how we're building it in, so we can track that over time even? And you can look at physical fitness data from the time that they enter until they graduate. So they're making their own personal goals as well, and we've got all of the data in one place.
And is each department doing that?
Yeah, it is.
Each department is using that data? So it's fascinating, you know, you think of teachers today, I mean, they're not just, they're not just teaching. They're, I mean, they're using information, technology, to improve that process, like you're just describing. And, you know, you kinda wonder, where, where do they find time in the day to do all of this? Because, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a lot.
Well, professional development, just last week, so here's an example of, we spent a lot of time looking at student work and calibrating the scoring of that work and the data that's there. And so now, teachers are asking, how can I pull data and look at it this way? How can I leverage it that way? So where we've inputted all of the information and continued to build it, now the questions are, I wanna look at it in this particular way. How do we do that? So we're learning the different types of reports that we can run, and that will be continuing, ongoing professional development. But we're using it through professional development days as well.
That's great.
I just, this is so exciting. I just, I'm sitting here thinking about six years ago, when we were working on the first strategic plan, and trying to wrap our brains around, do we have this, can we even do this? And now, the fact that we are doing it, and doing it so well, is just amazing.
It is.
Because that was one of the most daunting tasks, when we were looking at that first strategic plan many years ago.
Yes, 'cause remember, when I first, uh, when we first started talking about it, we were actually waiting for the Department of Ed solution, which was promised and supposed to come. And then we eventually, um, gave up on that and went on our own quest. And I, I give them all the credit for this, because it's been a two-year project for us, at least. And, um, it does allow us to look at both our big data and small data, right down to the individual student level. And they are using it that way, so it's, it's really what we hope for, and it, it really helps. It'll be ongoing, training, use of it, more and more sophisticated use of it. But it really, uh, allows us as educators to get down to the science of teaching. You know, the art of teaching is, is most important, but the science of teaching is, is also equally important. So without this, uh, type of data warehouse system, you really, you know, we had, we had a lot of data, we always, since- we've had a lot of data for seven years now, but we have it all in different places. And you really can't make sense of it, or have it work together to tell the story, if it's not all in the same place.
Do other districts do this, in this, in this way? I'm just curious, because I just feel like-
Some, I mean, I don't think everyone has, uh, one big umbrella data warehouse like we do, because we have been lucky to have the support and the financial backing to go ahead and do that. And so, for some districts, I think that's the barrier. So, I think some do, but it's certainly not universal, but I'll let you two speak to that.
I'd say, in terms of, from my experience, in terms of the work we do around assessment data, I'd say we're, we're ahead of most districts in the Commonwealth.
Wow, that's impressive.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sorry, you're, you're only on goal two. Sorry.
No, it's actually, so please stop us at any point. There's only five, so we're on goal three. And then when you'll see that when we get to the evaluation report, there's a lot of overlap because of the purpose and intent of that particular study. So looking at goal three really, it's teaching. It's preparing and connecting our teams through technology with students and connecting them to different resources, content, and learning experiences that's going to inspire more effective teaching for all learners. So a lot of the strategies here, the action steps, really went back to how are we integrating technology within our curriculum? What does that look like in the classroom? What are the expectations for technology? To fast forward for a moment, out of the technology evaluation report, that was a really big piece that came out of it. What, what are the expectations for technology use in classrooms by teachers? Of course, it can come down to devices, but it's not just about the device. It's what we are doing with the tools that we have in classrooms. So what does that look like within our curriculum? And then again, professional development to support the use as technology's always changing, and at the same time, how we're using the technology to really impact student learning for better outcomes. So the graduate courses that we're offering, the ongoing workshops back in the fall we offered, which was originally a technology literacy course that was offered through the Department of Ed up at the Microsoft Institute, we brought that course onsite. We had 20 teachers take that course back in the fall that really focused on integrating technology in ways that engage students in thinking about the learning and the purpose and how it was used to integrate within their curriculum. Our technology integration specialists, it's been wonderful having two of them this year, and with the budget going forward, hopeful that we'll be able to move to three. The support that they're able to provide to teachers to really impact their instruction in a way that maybe they hadn't thought of really is a, is a huge piece for us. And then again, going back to those expectations through the technology standards, the ISTI standards for students. And again, we have those for teachers, we have those for administrators, and we have those for coaches. So coaches being in the sense of our technology integration specialist, looking at what they're doing to help support the instruction in the classroom. And a lot of work has been done here, because honestly, the Technology Steering Committee in the last couple of years, the focus has been, what, what is the expectation for technology? We continue to purchase and spend money in areas of whether it's interactive whiteboards or document cameras or the response systems, and it's about how we're using that. So the conversations and expectations can vary, because again, you're looking at the professional development support, as well as the equity of having those different devices in classrooms. So you, you need both. But it, when, when the rubber meets the road, it's about what you're doing with your instruction. It's not the device. So what are the expectations? So these are general expectations, just to give you an idea, that first of all, technology, it's planned and it's purposeful. It's not using it for the sake of using an interactive whiteboard. So how are we engaging students with content? How are we using the technology so that it's used mostly by students? It's not going to do us any good if the technology in the classroom is constantly used by the teachers, and it's not in the hands of students. How are we using it to really push the higher-order thinking skills? The synthesis, the application, those, when we think about Bloom's taxonomy, which is something in education, not at the lower level, at very literal kinds of things, but really the higher-level skills. How are we using it for collaboration? When we go back to the Office 365, that platform is really allowing us to leverage collaboration in really new ways by providing student email accounts to our middle and high school students. But at the same time, we can leverage the collaboration in different ways with elementary, even though they do not have email accounts. And that we're using the technology to construct and build knowledge. It's not a matter of using a device just to consume and to take that information. It's how we're creating, building new knowledge and taking that further. So a framework to help kind of take that and look at it in a classroom perspective is the CEMR model that we're using. And Dr. Pruntadura is a researcher, and this is his model. And this is what we're using to frame curriculum, technology integration. So instead of going through and explaining all of the different levels within this, because of the time that we have, we wanted to just show you a very brief, three-minute video that will explain this model and at the same time, give you an example of what this looks like in today's classrooms.
Okay. We often know that using technology in school could help students learn. But how could our teachers reflect and grow effectively through using technology?
Well, that's what this model is for, the CEMR model. It's kind of like a Bloom's taxonomy for educators.
It was created by this guy, Dr. Ruben Pruntadura, who believes that using technology allows us to think differently and perform new tasks.
After all, if we have today's technology, then why teach like we did 20 years ago?
There's four different levels in two different sections in CEMR.
Let's take a look at the first level, substitution.
This is where the technology used acts as a direct substitute. Let's take the task of persuasive essay writing. I could write an essay by hand, or I could type an essay using the basic features of a word processing program.
The task is the same, and there's no functional change. The technology is being used as a substitute.
Lots of teachers start out at this level, but don't worry, because substitution is not a bad thing.
Even the best teachers visit this level from time to time.
The next level is called augmentation. This is where the task is still the same, but the tech allows for some sort of functional improvement. So instead of writing a persuasive essay on paper, we could use a program like Google Docs.
With this software, the task is still the same, but the unique features of a collaborative document provides some functional improvement.
In both these levels, the technology is used to simply enhance a lesson. This technology may make tasks more efficient, but it's not likely to make a big difference in future outcomes. Most learning takes place above the line, and it starts with modification.
Here, the technology is used to provide significant task redesign.
So instead of simply writing an essay, a student could publish a WordPress blog using text-embedded videos, pictures, and other web links to convey their argument. The audience is no longer just the teacher either.
It's the entire world.
People from anywhere with an Internet connection could review or comment on my writing, allowing for deeper analysis.
The final level and the ultimate goal of technology integration is redefinition.
Here, the technology allows for the creation of new tasks that were previously inconceivable. Instead of writing that essay, students could now create and publish a digital storytelling project to argue their writing with multimedia.
Plus, just like the blog, through publishing this movie to the world, it allows for other people to comment and analyze their message.
So the heart of the assignment is still the same, but the technology allows them to engage in a new, more involved task that's otherwise not possible.
At these levels, learning is transformed through the use of technology. When we are more engaged and involved, significant improvements in learning are more likely to take place.
Different people have different ideas about CEMR. Some think that CEMR is like a ladder that you climb. You start in substitution and work your way up to redefinition.
Others think each level is like a swimming pool that you swim in or visit from time to time throughout the school year, and that's okay.
Because no matter the interpretation, the real power of the framework is that it promotes reflective teaching in the classroom, what you do, why you do it, and how it helps learning.
By thinking about the different levels, teachers can focus on designing digital learning experiences that will help them for student outcomes.
See, the thing about CEMR is this, it's not the type of tech tool that defines the level, it's how the individual teacher uses it in their lesson.
So whether you're substituting or redefining learning...
Remember, the ultimate outcome for integrating technology should be simple, maximizing student success. Want more information on CEMR? Check out these links.
It's a good little video.
So it's nice, it's a nice one. And it really allows us to reflect on when we're using technology, and again, going back to that it's planned and it's purposeful.
Amy, I just want to follow up on a point you made about the integration specialist?
Yes.
Right, that, that's the addition in our budget this year, and I think this is timely as we're, we've just approved the budget and will be in May soon, and the public will be weighing in on this. This review tonight and showing us what you've done with our technology plan and how important the resources are to support the plan, support what we're doing. And this position is certainly going to do that, because right now, we have two for the, the whole district. And this one will allow us to have one at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. And if we want our teachers to continue to, you know, apply and use this technology, then we need assistance for them. We need, you know, support for them, because they're, they're teaching, and there's so many things that are changing. And so I just, I just wanted to make that comment, because I think it's really, it's really important. This is so impressive, this presentation you're giving. And again, it doesn't come without having real people helping us go about creating this technology in the classroom, too. So I just wanted to make that point.
Totally agree. I think that, that human support, that the actual support for what they're doing every day is really critical to everything we do, but no more so than now, because technology changes so fast. And that, you can't just say, "Here's our vision, here's our technology expectations, and here's the CEMR model to guide how you're planning the use of technology." There's, there's so much going on that we have to really make sure we're there to support people as well. So that's exactly why it is quite timely for us to have that through the person.
And even an example here is just, so we've been talking a lot through these different examples in staff meetings. And one of the grade levels, it was working with third-grade teachers. And they were talking about a particular example, and how do you take it to the next level? How do you, where it's not just substitution? And then one of the teachers said, "Well, I did this." And another teacher said, "I don't know how to do that." And they said, "Oh, Darlene, who's the technology integration specialist for elementary, she showed me how to do that, and it was great," and went on really singing her praises. So then the other teacher, "Let's have her come to one of our grade level meetings." So that's how it starts. We're really leveraging teacher leadership, and that's within the plan as well, but it's having that resource, to your point.
And finally, you actually will be meeting both of them at the next school committee meeting at the end of this month. We've, we've talked about it planned at other times. Either we've been canceled or something happened one day to one of them, you know, a family emergency. So you actually will get to meet both of them at the next meeting.
Great.
Let me talk a little bit about goal four. So all students and educators will have access to a comprehensive infrastructure for learning when and where they need it. So we're in the process currently of writing 130 new mobile devices that will be deployed at the high school and the middle school. These devices will allow us to be more flexible and agile and provide students with one-to-one computing opportunities. Also allow us to gain some experience with one-to-one computing and to develop more thoughtfully a, a plan moving forward around how that might be implemented and how it may, what it may be, what it may look like. Assistive technology, we continue to improve access to assistive technology through universal design, whether that's activating text-to-speech features or screen readers, functionality on the equipment that we have to improve access for, for our student population with learning disabilities to our, our curriculum. Developing and deploying emerging technologies, we've talked a lot about Office 365 and the use of the online collaboration tools and tools like video conferencing to provide virtual field trips for students and, and experiences to access curriculum and, and content beyond the school day through Web 2.0 tools and cloud computing. Device management, we've been very busy over the past couple of months, working on device management, implementing Microsoft software called System Center Configuration Manager and Casper. These are device management solutions that allow us to more easily deploy software and hardware as we, we bring it into the district. It also allows us to ensure equal access for students, so it can monitor the use of expensive applications, and it can allow us to more quickly, readily deploy those to be used. So if there's expensive graphic design software that's installed in, in a graphic arts studio, for instance, but students may like to use that in the media center, it will allow us to, to deploy that software, to remove a license where it's not being used, to deploy it where it can't be used. Again, equitable access, you know, evaluating how technology's being deployed, where it's being deployed, and making sure that students have access to the technology and the software that they need. We've been working to establish more defined protocols around bring-your-own-device and improving access to wireless network infrastructure and extending our resources to students that are looking to bring in a device. And Internet access has, has been an incredible improvement made there in terms of increasing access from 50 megs to 500 megs, allowing, again, allowing students to access multimedia content and content very quickly.
So Erin, you touched upon this point under goal one, student access and engagement. And it appears, again, obviously, under infrastructure, but I, I'm really glad you asked the detailed questions of Pearson Inform, because that whole idea of data storage and management has been one of our two biggest problems that we've worked hard on. But the other biggest problem that I think, I want to make sure the point is hit home, and I actually wrote it down so I'd remember what to say it, our most serious problem prior to now really has been that lack of access, which was due to either bandwidth limitations, or it was heavy content filtering that just wasn't working for our students or our teachers. And that problem was something that came to light almost weekly in different ways in different schools, different levels, in different classes, with different teachers, different students. It was a constantly nagging problem, and I have to say, it's completely gone away. It has completely gone away this year because of the work that you've done on, on the bandwidth and on the, the new policies and procedures for content filtering that really puts the responsibility on teachers and students, as everything else is, whether it's whatever you decide to hand out in class, or what students decide to do or not do, you know, in, in terms of their choices. And I, I can't say enough that how serious that issue was for us and how quickly it has disappeared. Thank you.
Well, you have to have your infrastructure able to handle everything you want to do before you can move forward. Erin, can you spend just another minute? Go just a, a little bit deeper on the bring-your-own-device status. You, you made the comment just now that we're working on policies and, where are we on that from your perspective?
So we, we have some loosely-defined policies around bring-your-own-device. Students are allowed to bring their device. They are allowed to access our, our network.
Middle school, high school, just high school?
So there's, there's different policies. Some of them, it depends on the class they're in and, and the policies of the teacher, but both in the middle school and the high school, students are bringing devices. We're seeing over 200 devices a day that are being logged on between the middle school and the high school that are BYOD devices.
So, so when you talk about wanting to formalize policies, what are some of the things you're grappling with? Or what, what, what's the next step in your mind? Is it, is it trying to get uniformity across usage in classrooms or?
Trying to really be able to deliver tools to, to students that decide to bring their own device that we would, we would extend through our own equipment, whether it's through agnostic software delivery or access to Office 365, Office 2, access to our software. So when they, when they come to the school building, they can access our bandwidth, they utilize our content filtering and our, and our safety equipment for antivirus and things like that. But then we can also allow them to access graphic design software that we may use in one of our graphic arts studios.
Geometer Sketchpad.
Geometer Sketchpad. So how can we deliver resources to students that we would, as, as we would if it was our own device?
One last question on this. So is this an area that, you know, six months further down the road, you feel like you could come back and say, "Here's what I think we should do," or do you think this is just an always-evolving kind of a subject? Or how do you, how do you think about BYOD?
Well, I think, I think it's always evolving, as technology is. But I think we, we've laid some groundwork in terms of infrastructure to ready ourselves to make some decisions in terms of formalizing a philosophy around BYOD.
Yeah, thank you.
I think as we've discussed here, our, our philosophy is, you know, not to rush ahead and not lay the foundation or be prepared for the support. So our next step that Erin mentioned, the rolling out of the 130 new mobile devices, which are in sets of 16, I think, of mobile, of mobile, our, our next step, we feel, because students who want to bring their own device are bringing their own device, but we feel our next step is to offer a one-to-one learning experience at times, not all day long. We're not ready for that yet. You know, not all day long, at every class, we expect a student to be in an individual device, but to have the flexibility, using those mobile devices, to have every student experi- But to have the flexibility using those mobile devices, to have every student, in the middle of high school, experience a one-to-one, have a one-to-one experience when it's appropriate so they can start learning what, how that happens and what they do and how it can help and how it can enhance learning. And then maybe we'll be ready for the next step, which is, you know, a, a one-to-one environment eventually throughout the day. But we, we definitely take those interim steps to give our students experience with that.
It's an important topic because, you know, as parents, what we see is the change in the bus behavior, right? It used to be they'd get on the bus and they'd talk to each other. Now they get on the bus and they all pull out their phone, as you well know, and they're all doing this on the bus ride. And so for that, which is fine, hopefully we can direct how they use it. But, but when they then get to school and they are told, put it in your locker or put it away or, you know, if that's how they want to learn, then obviously we should enable that to the extent we feel is appropriate.
They, they don't have to put it in their locker anymore.
Right.
So that's what's changed. So students who have a device that want to use a device can use a device unless it's not appropriate for what the teacher's doing in the class at the time. And, you know, it depends. It's like any, it's like any classroom environment. Depending on what they're doing the day, during the day, you might need a pencil, you might need a pen, you might need a device, you might need paper, you might not even any of the above.
Agreed.
So I think that, that, those judgments, like anything else in teaching and learning, have to be made by the teacher in cooperation with the students. But they, they don't have to shut their device in the locker as they did previously all day long. It's, it's not a banned item anymore.
Thank you.
So again, we talked about increased internet access, but not, not only that, it's the network infrastructure. And in layman's terms, we talk about local area network and wide area network. So all of our classrooms are connected within, within the building, and then all of our schools are connected within the district. So we talk about our local area network. It's kind of like our back roads and our, our, our streets. And then our WAN is our highways and our, our state, our state routes and connecting our buildings. So we've done a lot of work around this to, to increase access to internet bandwidth and to local resources, whether it's application servers or, or our data warehouse. We've increased our LAN speeds from 10100 to 1 gig, 10 gig. And our, our WAN speed connecting our building to 10 gig. So that, that does enable us to continue to move forward with things like BYOD and the deployment of new technology and software. So lastly, Goal Five. Redesigning process and structure to take advantage of the power of technology. This is something we've been talking about quite a bit in terms of, of our use of data. But, but also efficiencies, whether it's being able to be agile in the deployment of software where it's needed and hardware where it's needed, but also going green through things like server consolidation and, and virtualization. Just this year alone, we've been able to consolidate approximately 20 servers to date into, into four physical servers. So we've reduced energy consumption quite a bit.
That's great.
From server, from our server infrastructure. But also using our device management software to do things like power management, to recognize when a computer is, is inactive and to be able to shut that down, to, to recognize schedules and anticipate when computers might be used. So the system can, can analyze and learn when computers are being used and when they're not being used so they can put them in a, in a standby state to conserve power. And at the end of the day, to, to reduce power consumption by, by putting machines into standby or, or hibernate or shutting them down. And we talked about the expansion of our Technology Integration Specialist. We can have all the technology in the world in terms of devices and software, but it's the support of our integration specialists which help us progress through the, through the levels of SAMR and, and get teachers on board with using technology and helping them create lessons that are more student-centered involving the use of technology for students. And I'm glad we get to come back to data management staffing. So we, we did increase from 1.5 to 2.0 FTE. But we're able to do things, and we're starting to do things like analyze the way that our systems are, are being used, trying to get to a more distributed data system where the data's in the hands of the end users, whether it's clerical staff, whether it's curriculum leaders, and right down into the hands of teachers. So we talked about interactive technologies, we've talked about mobile devices, we've talked about BYOD and cell phones, right down to informal assessment. So our interactive whiteboard software platforms that work with, with cell phones or student response, student responders that almost look like a cellphone, allow teachers to do informal assessments. So if they're giving a math lesson, they can quickly give an informal assessment. Students have a responder or could use a cellphone or a mobile device to send in an answer and allow the, the teacher to quickly get data and overtly get data and know when a student is, is comprehending or, or mastering a concept or may need some more instruction.
So the Technology Program Evaluation Report was the report that came from our evaluation study of ourselves last year. That was really the three-step research study to look, to see how we're leveraging the technology we have within the district. Are we maximizing it for everything that it has to offer? And that to really look at how we're using our technology as a tool for teaching and learning in order to, to impact student achievement. So that program evaluation, that research study that we did, was really measuring against these four criteria, looking at student skills and outcomes, teacher's skills, administration district policy, and then our infrastructure. So there's a lot of parallels back to the technology plan. And you'll see that within as I go quickly through these different pieces here. So just to go to that first one, student skills and outcomes. The claims that we saw that came out of that research data, and again, that was the qualitative and quantitative data that was walking through every single learning space last year, looking at what technology we had, how it was being used, surveys that went out to students, teachers and parents, focus groups that took place with students, teachers and parents. All of that information compiled to support these particular outcomes and the claims. So as an example, on the student skills and outcomes, we saw that the technology that we had to support our objectives, despite the growing technology, it really was not being leveraged to the potential that it could be. So what did we need to do in order to leverage technology more and to make sure that there was more consistency taking place across the district? So a set of recommendations came out, and the progress towards the recommendations are highlighted here. It goes back to, again, what are the expectations and standards? Those ISTI standards, looking at the professional development that we're providing, that it's technology-driven and that we're supporting teachers and the use of the devices and the technology and the software that we have and have spent money on, to be quite honest. Looking at the access, so whether it's the content filtering that we were talking about a little bit ago, looking at the application of skills that it's embedded within our curriculum. Going back to that example in the SAMR model that you saw, the interactive whiteboard software. Having a, a common platform so that, again, the support can be there more consistently. Going back to that equitable access from wireless connections to where there's anytime-anywhere access. The digital citizenship, we found that through that study that we were, we were doing a good job with that, but we need to continue. Technology's changing, different challenges present themselves as technology is being used by students and how we're addressing that. So that's continued, and it's continued especially with the focus of providing email to students and the collaboration from looking at what is a good digital citizen and how is it to be a good collaborator when you're using these particular tools. So all of these particular pieces are, are the big ideas of where that focus has been. So I think you can see some of the parallels from the technology plan. The second indicator, looking at the teacher's skills. The claims here that really came loud and clear was the expectations and the consistency. So we've been, as we looked at the SAMR model, really using that to frame our conversations so we have a common vocabulary and we can look at technology integration under the same philosophy and how is it going to maximize student outcomes. So having a framework to frame our own expectations. We're at the beginning of that journey, so we have that common language. We're going to be, we've been in development, it's, we've had it with K-12 Insight, our company that we contract with right now, a very comprehensive professional development survey that's to assess technology professional development needs because they do vary, and they vary by level, whether it's elementary, middle and high. And to have data from that that's going to really help us drive professional development, not just next year, but in the next coming years. The Technology Integration Specialist, we've talked a lot about them tonight and the support to provide for teachers to really help us with the consistency and the integration throughout all of the curriculum areas and that it's embedded within our curriculum. So how are we taking what we're already teaching and taking it to the next level? So we are maximizing the engagement of students and the outcomes. The third indicator here with administration and district policy, really looking at what is our vision, and that's very clearly stated in our technology plan. So we were evaluating ourself against this plan to see where our next steps are. We have a strong vision for technology. I think you've seen and heard from tonight as well as other things that hopefully your own children have experienced and parents at home have seen different improvements, that we're putting more into how we're using the technology. And then again, going back to that consistent platform with Office 365, and that it's going to be able to provide other opportunities outside the classroom. As an example, students will have a license for Office 365 as teachers by us having the license within the district. So if they didn't have Microsoft Office at home, they're now going to have access at no cost.
And in terms of BYOD, through our new, the, the new Microsoft Campus Software Agreement that the district will have, students will have access to five copies of Office 365 in its cross-platform. So whether that's on their iPad or their desktop, they'll have those, those copies through their email account. They can manage them, where they're installed, they can pull them back. You know, so that, that will further ready us for Office 365 and as well as extend learning opportunities beyond the school day.
And the last one, going back to infrastructure. So you see a, a lot of the things listed here that we've talked about, some of the, the techy tech talk that he's very fluent in, and that's not my wheelhouse. But I think that you can really see that marriage between the, the, the infrastructure piece and what it's allowing us to do in the classroom, that we really were, we had the barriers before and it's opened up. So a lot of that really is, I think it's in support of the technology plan.
Absolutely, and it's, it's, it's really about improving teaching and learning and, and allowing for both teachers and students to have the tools they need to be successful. In terms of wireless access, some things that we've, we've talked about, we're on schedule, hopefully by the end of February, that we'll have 100% of the instructional spaces at the high school and the middle school will have wireless coverage. And then for the start of next year, September, to have 100% of the instructional spaces throughout the district, have wireless internet and network connectivity. Again, just quickly, you know, we've increased internet, internet bandwidth. We've increased our local area network connection speeds and our wide area connection speeds to support BYOD and, and one-to-one computing initiatives. And really expanded the use of technology for communication with students and collaboration with teachers and with, with families. You know, using tools like Office 365 and email as well as Edmodo and other collaboration and communication tools.
Erin, just a question on the communication theme. Have you, and this is a little bit off the teaching and learning topic, but certainly technology-related. Have you had a chance to poke around our, our websites? I'm sure you have. You know, our school district websites and give any thought yet to how we make them a little more of a living document, a little less static, a little more newsworthy? Because one of the things I hear in the community is, what we all hear really, is communication. Parents always want, the community's always looking for more communication, more up-to-date, what's going on. Just as an example, a tangible example, the, the band, the marching bands opportunity to do the pep rally last week. And, you know, that wasn't something that was well-known or, you know, I think the people who needed to hear about it heard about it. But, you know, if there was a place to put something like that up, have you had a chance to look at that at all?
Well, actually, just a couple of weeks ago in our administrative team meeting, we were discussing a review of the websites and the information that we post and how it's posted. Again, just like our data systems, looking more towards a distributed model, allowing content area editors, so, so the most relevant staff and students access to, to post and, and edit the website. So we're looking at content management tools and, and things like SharePoint, for instance, part of Office 365 to allow teachers access to have their own websites.
I think it's in our strategic plan as well, that we wanted, you know, a section on the main webpage. You know, I, I just want to start by saying, what I hear from other districts is that our website is much better than most school districts. So I want to put that out there. Ours is pretty darn good. But I, we have agreed that it doesn't have that ability to have a live, even if it's just a box like the latest news, you know, that we can. So we have been pretty narrow in who has access to the main webpage and who can provide updates because you can imagine if it's open access, we don't know what information would be on there and it could result in not protecting our school district. So we've been careful about that. But it is something we have talked about at a couple of administrative team meetings. We talked about it and pretty sure included it in the strategic plan. But with all the stuff we've gone on technology, it actually has been something that I, we've, we've discussed, but I have not put on the front burner because there's so many other things that had bigger priority that had to happen first. But that's certainly something we've talked about and that Erin is working on. It's just, you know, in our list of the first 50 priorities in technology, I'm going to say it's number 49.
I mean, the, the work here that you've presented is excellent. You know, I know, and I'll obviously give the other committee members a chance to, to speak as well, but this is, this is a little bit in my wheelhouse and, you know, it's really good progress. It really is. So thank you for what you're doing. And I just know that, you know, as you keep doing this, when you can get to our website and make it more of a living document, I think the content is very good, the resource.
It is.
I think making it timely and something would, would go a long way too. So I just wanted to make sure that was on your, your list somewhere.
It's definitely.
If you can remember what it says in the strategic, we actually talked about that.
We did, I know we talked about it.
I've been going to call it like a live news box. I don't know what else to call it, but that's how I'm thinking about it. But it just isn't, in our list of priorities, we actually set it down further because we had to get these other things done, but it is on our radar.
Our, our users, our community is always hungry for current information, so.
Our, our middle school and our high school, they have Twitter accounts now. So we're, we're catching up in different areas. I'm not on Twitter, so I just go on the website, but.
I just send pictures to the high school principal to tweet out.
Yep.
So far.
I just wanted to echo what you said, Bruce. I mean, this is so impressive, so impressive, the whole presentation, the details in each of, and the way it's outlined so that people really, again, you've just provided such a great framework to explain what it is that the district is doing. And, you know, I think back to when we first talked about a technology plan. I, this is just incredible. It's so comprehensive. And it was just, I think we just, it was uncharted territory. We didn't know where we were going, we didn't know what we were doing. You clearly know what you're doing. I mean, it's, it's just, it's very impressive, so thank you for all your hard work.
To echo in terms of what Dr. Burdis was saying, it really is a partnership between, you know, technology and instruction and really without the support of the superintendent and assistant superintendent and administrative team, a lot of this work wouldn't be possible.
It's really all coming together, couldn't be happier. And it's coming together rapidly in.
It'll never come together though. Technology will always evolve, it will always.
Always. But we have, we have a much better marriage of technology and instruction than we ever had.
We basically have our, our hand on the tail now. Anyway, we're on the ride, right?
Any other comments for Amy or Erin?
I just, I will say, my children benefited from the anywhere, anytime learning. They were stranded in an airport and were able to catch up on their homework while they were making their way back from the Super Bowl with their dad. But, you know, having, having the ability to check in with their teachers and collaborate with their classmates, they didn't miss a beat. They missed one day of school and just right back in. They also both told me, it's funny, today, they got laptops for Christmas and they, we didn't put Microsoft Word on them yet, just hadn't gotten around to it. And they both said, you know, we really need that. And now I'm going to go home and say, you know what, you really have that now, so. And now I'm going to go home and say, you know what, you really have that now, so through Office 365. So I learned something tonight. I learned a lot tonight, actually, but I learned something that will be helpful in my own student's life, so thank you though. This is a remarkable amount of work and.
It is.
A great presentation.
Thanks, Aaron, I'll get back to work.
You too, Amy.
Thank you.
Amy's not done, we're not done with Amy.
I'll just move Steve.
Aaron, thank you very much.
You know what, though? It's funny, I get the sense from both Amy and Aaron that you don't need to tell them to get back to work.
No.
They're doing it all on their own. Actually, I believe I've told both of them, maybe you should go home now. About going home now. I think I've said that, you know, nine out of 10 times.
Speaking of which, Aaron, you don't need to stick around unless you need to stick around. We won't be offended if you leave. Nice job. Ready for act?
It's a lot of fun, it really is.
Ready for round two?
Ready for round two.
Act two, District Report Card.
Okay. So the District Report Card, we know that that came out of our strategic plan a number of years ago and has ended up being a great communication tool to the community. So the draft that you have in front of you is an update. Some of the information on the front is strictly logistical. We have a new assistant principal at the middle school, Dr. Worley. So you see some of that information that's there with our new strategic plan, our new objectives from the strategic plan, as well as our vision and our mission are outlined there. And since it is a new vision and mission, I'd like to just highlight that for those that are at home. Our vision, in collaboration with the community, the Foxborough Public Schools will provide students with intellectual, artistic, and character-building educational experiences to inspire them to achieve in an ever-changing global society. That's our new vision. Our new mission, the mission of the Foxborough Public Schools, guided by its core values, is to engage students in a rich diversified education, thereby empowering them to challenge themselves as they become productive, responsible citizens. And in order to accomplish that, we have our new four strategic plan objectives, which we go to regularly as we report out on different things here. When you open the document up, the information that's the same as in the past is the district overview, statistical information, as well as MCAS data. And the technology highlights section at the bottom has morphed a little bit. We've consolidated some of the things based on the things you heard this evening. But one of the pieces that came out of last year's recommendation was to highlight our per pupil expenditure, to give a better picture of where we are in comparison to the per pupil expenditure in the state. You can see from that graph there that since 2009 and the last five years, we've made up ground and reached the state average for per pupil expenditure in 2012, but then in 2013. And again, this data is a year behind because this is what comes from the Department of Ed and that we are slightly below. So again, goes to that good value for a dollar here in Foxborough, which is also called out in the Did You Know section. A couple of new things that are on the opposite page there is the AP Studio Art. We've continued to add AP courses for students at the high school. And one of the really exciting pieces, thinking back to the baseline and benchmarks assessments, is that we were named to the fifth annual AP Honor Roll by the College Board. And that is for increasing access, but at the same time, having students perform at a high level. So we have increased the access to AP courses tremendously, but at the same time, had the same and higher level of performances of our students. And so to be named to the College Board Honor Roll, that was really exciting for us.
And I think the other data point we thought was important under AP, to the left of the Did You Know, is that between 2013 and now, we've had a 63% increase in the number of students taking AP courses.
And I think that's so significant. Wow. And then coupled that with the increase in the, how students are doing on those scores too.
Exactly. So I think that really speaks to three, I believe, three factors. One, we're offering more opportunities for AP. The second is that more students believe they can challenge themselves and want to. And third, that they're better prepared to take on that challenge. So I think it's, that's certainly a great point for us that we wanted to.
We talk a lot about culture and it's clear that the culture supports students to do that, to take on, to meet new challenges, and we're helping them to do that, so I think it's, that number represents that, that if more students are really willing to take the plunge. I mean, even years ago, I know my children were in school, you know, especially my oldest, you know, they were less taking the.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
But it was also, there was a certain sector of the class that would take it and others that maybe didn't, you know, meet those same kinds of, you know, grades or courses that really maybe didn't try to challenge themselves. And now it's just, it's so different and I just, I think that's really important.
It didn't have the confidence. Like, one of the things that's new in the last couple of years is the AP Potential Night, really reaching out to students and encouraging them. Because even just if you take one in high school, if you're going beyond, that's college-level courses, so then you're going to be taking four or five. Why not be exposed to one to get that flavor before you leave high school when you're going to be taking at that level, four or five in a semester?
And I do, I do want to credit Diana Myers-Packel, who came in with that philosophy that if we open up AP, if we both expand and open up AP opportunities and gives those students a chance that we should let them challenge themselves and we don't, you know, back in to the traditional times, pretty much if you were recommended and met certain criteria, then you'd be put on that recommended list for AP courses. But now I think students have a lot more autonomy to decide if they want to take on something like that. And I do credit our high school faculty and their principal, Ms. Myers-Packel, for having that philosophy, which does open up a lot more opportunity for students individually.
So it's a draft, any feedback that you have as far as things that you've thought of that we have not? Please share.
Any comments for Amy?
I love the Did You Know section. You know, I think those are the ones where people might really look at and.
The engineering course, one of the things that's new there, like going back to the teaching and learning highlight and highlighting that within.
Amy, I have two, I almost hesitate to say anything because it's such a good document and we've iterated it so many times, but just two things that hit me, I don't know if they're any good or not. One is the news don't stand out to me, the new items.
Okay.
Because we have so much information here. I don't know if a text box around the news or italics for the news or, I know we've got new exclamation point, and it's not a big deal, not a big deal, but just a thought.
Why don't we put them at the top?
Or put them at the top, yeah, maybe. Or maybe you prefer to have your top point at the top. So that's just, again, it's just an observation. And the other, the other observation is in our table that talks about our advanced and proficient MCAS results, it'd be more informative perhaps if we fit a different colored bar in there that just showed the state average maybe, how we compare to the state. Then it would be a little more meaningful because.
I like that idea.
Because we can see the data, but so what, right? It's, okay, grade three reading is at 65%. Is that good, bad, or indifferent?
Right. Actually, last year, when we were doing this draft, last year, we had a little summary bar underneath it with a summary statement, but we needed space, so we decided not to put it in, but that is a better way of communicating what that means.
And you might, you'll have trouble fitting the legend at the bottom, but if you just put a table or a bar and just put it along the top, that all the yellow bars are the state average or something.
I think that's important because we look at the MCAS at so many different levels and longitudinally and, you know, with the cohorts. And I think that for this, where you just really want a snapshot, that the benchmark should be the state.
Right. So that you can see the relative.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Context.
Or if you'd rather use our hakamak comparison or whatever you think, but it'd be interesting to have a compares, something to compare our data to.
I think the state makes the most sense, as you said before, because you have the per pupil expenditure right there underneath it. So we're spending less than the state, how are we doing via V the state average?
Other comments for Amy?
Oh, it looks great, Amy.
Otherwise, I think you have our consensus to publish. Is that true, everyone?
Yes, absolutely.
So as usual, we'll be mailing this to all of the postal customers in the town. And that includes business and industry and private residents and people who have children and people who don't. And it's been pretty well received the last few years, so.
And when will we publish roughly?
We'll probably be mailing it out, get it going next week, actually, before the end of school vacation. We typically do mail it out at the end of January, but because we had some weather challenges, we're just a few days behind. So probably by next week, we'll prepare the bulk mailing and get it going. Thank you for your feedback.
You are welcome. FY15 budget update, Mr. Yukna.
Only significant change that we're posting in right now is that we, as you know, we're adding a additional position at the Ahern for custodial due to some staffing changes there. We actually have only been running with the four so far this year, so we're going to, at this point, capture about $22,000 in salaries that we won't be spending up to this point. We are obviously still looking for the position to refill it now. And what that did do is give us a little bit of more resources along, you know, Aaron's group as far as technology, because as they are building through a lot of this infrastructure, we're coming up with little one-offs that we're missing. But still, at the end, even with some of that we've already incurred, we're still at 29,900 to the good. Again, a little too early on utilities, I would have, I thought a little bit good a little while ago, but after the last couple of weeks, I'm thinking, not so good.
You may have to revise that, yes.
So we may have some.
This is a pipe tree.
Yeah, but we have been lucky, I think, overall, as far as, you know, most of our repairs and stuff. I think there's, there has been over the last couple of years, a really concerted effort in, again, keeping everything up on a regular basis, no matter what it is, whether it's technology, whether it's, you know, heating systems, whatever. And as we get, you know, a couple more years into this, that really helps to level off our budget. So I think really, you know, we're not getting those peaks anymore of major issues going on, we're just getting one here, one there. So I think, I'm very comfortable. I don't see, again, it's a little too early to try to harvest much of the other things, although we do have a couple of areas on the teaching side where, you know, there are some salary things in core programs that, you know, didn't happen training-wise, didn't have as many, people do things that, whether it was evaluations or whatever, which will recoup a little bit of money on that as well. So it's going to go on the positive side, not on the negative side with those type of items at this point. So again, I think we're in pretty good shape that way. And again, I think, this is such a transition year with the tech side, that it's nice having a little bit of leeway here because, again, you can't stop halfway into a process here. When we find a problem, we have to kind of fix it and just keep it moving forward, so. Other than that, I think if, you know, I see no other, you know, scary issues at least as far as where we are at this point in the year, so 29,900 to the good, I think this is a good place to be.
Need a motion to.
Please.
The budget update.
Set motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you, Bill. Bill, any quick comments on how we're handling snow removal and school prep and all that? I mean, it seems.
No, I mean.
I know we're having to be careful around buses and sidewalks.
We, I think the staff has been very good. I, you know, they've always, they work as a real team now, which is nice to kind of watch. And I've been around the different buildings when it's time to clean up and stuff. So actually, our staff has our areas that we maintain usually done before even the DPW can get into the building sites. It is nice that we have our own truck with a plow because that gives us access to our buildings, even if the town hasn't been able to get there.
But it's been getting its use.
Yeah, and the town, yeah, it has. And the town's been doing a great job because they'll come in after they get the roads clean and then do the final cleanups from there for us. So the next morning, we are in great shape. And really, you know, I think over the last couple storms, when you look at it, the condition of the fronts of the buildings and the access to the buildings has been, has been excellent. There's a real collaborative effort between the DPW, whether it's Amy, Devin, myself, or Tony, dealing with them on different issues. You know, they call us, asking if there's things that need to be done.
I just want to reiterate that. I can't thank the DPW enough. The last couple storms, so challenging and they, they are, they work tirelessly, they've been really terrific and I think done a great job. And as Bill said, even come on, want to the property even more and done some things that we're finding challenging that need help. So thanks in particular to Pete.
Yeah.
So, but they've been terrific and I think it's just a challenging winter, but they were, they've been terrific, so thank you.
December was easy.
December was. January made up for it.
Thank you to the DPW from us as well.
Bill, I'm sure Tony's been monitoring the amount of snow on the roofs. We've got all these flat roofs and we have a huge volume of snow right now. I know it's been a concern in the past and the news stations are all starting to talk about it, but.
I think the, we are in a program and have been for a number of years because of our insurance companies, where basically, we actually get credit, financial credit, so it's a benefit to us, to make sure that all of our roof drains are in good operable condition and we check those on a monthly basis. So just before these big storms came in, all of those had been just checked, so we know there's nothing blocking the drains. Even though we've gotten a significant amount of snow, you also have to realize that this has been very fluffy, light snow. So if you condense this down, if we get a warm day, this stuff will condense down to half of its distance right now. So yes, there's a lot of weight up there. The structures of our buildings, I think, are well done as far as the way they're, you know, the steel and block. So I'm pretty, pretty comfortable with what we have from a structural point of view. But again, there is virtually nothing we can do as far as shoveling off roofs because with rubber roofs, you go up there, you're going to do more damage and have more leaks and more problems. So I think at this point, we're kind of comfortable with where we are, we're just going to kind of hope that we do get a nice warm day so we can get some melting and get some of it off the roof that way. Exactly. So, but other than that, I think, again, they're doing a good job to try to keep the snow away from the buildings and the areas, you know. Again, some of your major concerns really are exhaust areas getting blocked up and stuff just like you'd have on a house. Obviously, we do the exact same thing here. We also have a program that we're checking for freeze capability. And again, that's part of the insurance thing, so we're going through the building and looking for areas that could freeze if we weren't here on a long weekend. You know, we had very, you know, harsh temperatures during that weekend and making sure that heating systems and our backups to those areas are working. So I think we've done about as good as we can do and it's really, you know, can't control mother nature in total, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Donation.
Yes, asking the school committee to accept a donation of $693 from the Wrestling Takedown Club to the athletic department. Always good news to accept a donation. Make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Steve would say with gratitude.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, other matters.
There will, inasmuch as this is Katie's last wonderfully contributing meeting, also, I ask to have an unexpired term fulfillment put in informational matters for us. And we have a definite policy about how we are to act from here on in. So can we all look at this? Because we should probably discuss this. We have 30 days as of the 6th to notify the selectmen and we may choose to open it up to fill. It would only be about a couple of meetings if we did that, or just leave the seat open so people could pull papers to run for the year.
I was contacted by Mr. Gray, who was sitting in for Mrs. Brew at the selectman meeting earlier this week. So they're now aware and they've read the paper and they know. And I've also been in touch with Mr. Cutler. And the town clerk has informed me it's our decision whether to, whether we feel we need an additional person to fill the slot for the short period of time. Debbie and I had a brief conversation today about whether we think that's necessary. Certainly, the major votes are past us now and we often don't have a lot of dissension. We usually talk things to a point we get to consensus. So I, personally, I'm not too concerned, but I also haven't finalized my thinking on whether it makes sense from my own personal perspective to fill the seat now or wait till the May election. But I do understand from Mr. Cutler, that's our decision. I'm just going to confirm that with him.
And just for people who might not have this in front of them, the policy does state that the, if the seat is filled, it's until the next town election, which is coming up at the beginning of May. So we're really talking about the months of March and April. So that's just to frame the discussion.
Right, but by the time, if we did open it, we leave time for applicants, then interviewing and all that. And at most, there would be only two meetings left in April and perhaps only one, depending on the timing. And successfully, after the passing of Van Igo, I know, that was even earlier in January, and the school committee at that time decided not to fill it, but to leave it vacant until the May meeting. And then that's when we got Katie.
That's right.
So it's worked very well by not rushing just to fill it and it saves a lot of work too. too in time. So we have, we'll think about these things and discuss it.
Yeah, maybe if you all want to think about it and give me your opinions, we can go from there. But I'm, at, at this point, I'm inclined to, to agree with that and it sounds like we have precedent for that, but I don't.
We have a precedent for it. I actually would be very inclined to suggest that.
Okay. Do you have a feeling, Tina, at this point?
We're down to one or two meetings at the most.
I, I, I actually don't, I, you know, could go either way. I think it would be great to have another member on the committee. You know, more viewpoint, more perspective, but also, as Debbie pointed out, it's, there's not a lot of time between now and the May election, actually. And I, I think papers have to be returned to the town clerk by March 16th, so we may not have even appointed somebody at that point. So again, I could go either way, frankly.
Okay. Do you want to weigh on, weigh in?
It's definitely a committee decision.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Debbie. Debbie, anything else?
No. Just, I, I really would have loved to have been at the a cappella concert tonight.
Yeah, sorry. So would Frank, who's running our cameras for us, so thank you, Frank. Tina, anything?
Well, I wanted to congratulate our New England Patriots on their Super Bowl win.
Oh, did they win?
Yeah, in case you didn't hear. And I also wanted to congratulate our high school football team. I heard on the news that they went up there and cleared off the cars for the Patriots after all that snow.
Some of our students did. Not the whole team, I found out afterwards, but some of the students did go. I think that's terrific.
I, I think it just shows the kind of kids we have here in town.
I think there were so many great lessons learned from our New England Patriots this season, particularly the way it ended, that I will discuss that another time. But, because I, I actually, when the Super Bowl ended, I got a piece of paper and wrote down how many great life's lessons there were.
Lots of them.
In this season and in that game. And I, I literally grabbed a piece of paper and started writing them down, but that's for another time because really, I just want to reiterate what I said to Katie at the last meeting, which is, thank you so much for your so many, your nine years of service. It's been great working with you.
Likewise.
And that is my only other matter for this evening in honor of you.
Well, and the most important.
And the most important.
Amy, anything?
Nope.
Bill?
Well, then we have one last piece of business. Thanks to Mrs. Ballinger for picking this up. But Katie, once again, thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
And blue and gold on a snowy day.
Beautiful. I'm not going to open this because.
Yes, we understand.
Yes. Thank you so much for recognizing me. I, I so appreciate it and just want to, again, just very briefly, you know, like I said at the last meeting, just, it's been a wonderful, wonderful run and I've really just, oh, learned so much and been so thankful to be around such wonderful people and, I mean, this community is, you know, right here in my heart. That's all I can say.
Well, you're not going far.
No, no, I am not.
And perhaps you'll have fi, time now. I mean, how many years have we going to been having a cup of coffee together?
Yeah, I know. I was thinking about that, Debbie. I guess, I, I think, yes, we will, absolutely, yes. So again, thank you so much for your kind words, these beautiful flowers, ah, so, so thoughtful. And I just, you know, I've just been so happy to be a part of this, truly, you know, just so happy. So I'm going to be watching, so don't, I'm not going to be far. And I know you guys are all going to just continue doing what you do best.
Thank you, Katie.
So thank you.
Best wishes.
Very, very, very much.
Thank you. Public service can be a thankless job and want to make sure that we all say thank you so much. It means so much to the students and the teachers here.
And the parents.
Yeah.
And the parents.
I, I just feel so fortunate to have had the opportunity to, to be in public service and will continue, I'm sure, and, you know, in the future because I just love it at some point, so thank you. Well, let us know when you move back to Foxborough.
Motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Can I second?
All in favor? Good night and goodbye, Mrs. Adair.
See you soon.